Regarding the wire. So what we want to do is just make sure that as you're passing the mic, that we're passing it totally behind you because if not, it's going to get tangled up in between these chairs. Yes. Yes, yeah, but still I want them to do the same thing to make sure it goes behind them. Or if it does not go behind them, they got to make sure it stays in front of them. Okay, alright, so, so we'll just make sure it stays in front of you so it's not being tangled in between, okay? And make sure.
Testing.
So we should have enough room that's all the way down this way. Testing one, two, testing one, two. David, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hello, welcome to the Dayton Unit NAACP Candidates' Panel. This evening, we want to hear from School Board Candidates from the city of Dayton, the city of Trotwood, and Jefferson Township. In the city of Dayton, there are actually four seats, or actually two seats.
Three seats. Three seats for candidates.
We're all in here, but basically we know that sometimes we have flaws. So, we have four candidates that are seeking three seats in the Dayton School Board race. And Trotwood, there are actually three seats. There are three candidates seeking two seats. And one individual has called us, which is Aaron Lincoln, and he has made it very clear that he wanted to be here this evening. However, he is on a work assignment. In the Jefferson Township, there are three individuals that are seeking two seats. And that's one particular race. And in the other race, there is one seat that is uncontested, and that individual is also here with us. So, sit back, relax, listen to the candidates and what they are, what their platform is, and what they want to do for our children. At the end of the day, children open, education opens doors to unlimited possibilities. And it's because of each one of you that is vying for the seat of a school board member inside of your respective jurisdiction. Some of you all are actually incumbents, some are seeking to ensee you, some are seeking to run with you. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure that everyone knows that everything that happens today is for and in the name of our children. Our children in Jefferson, our children in Jefferson, and our children in Dayton. So with that, we want to turn it over to our moderator for this evening, which is none other than former State Senator Tom Roberts, who serves as the Dayton NAACP Little Captain Chair, Jim Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. President, you're welcome.
Thank you. We will have the three individuals up front. One will have the card that'll tell you how many minutes you have left in your presentation. And some will be two-minute questions, some will be one minute, and there will be a thirty-second question. Really maybe the difficulty that means stop. The sororities and Pat Hilli are passing out questions for, for you. And we may not, the audience, we may not ask the exact question you're asking because there may be some questions that are very similar. So we'll consolidate them, and I'll do my best to get as many questions in as possible. But as always, we have more questions than time, so I'll do our best to get, to get those questions answered. Okay, I think that's it. Something else comes up, I'll get to it when we come. But there are some questions being picked, these papers being passed around for questions. As many of you know, one of the other hats I wear is the president of the Ohio Conference of Branches of the NAACP. And for the last four years or more, I've been deeply concerned about what's going on in our schools. As my colleague CJ Princes, who I served with the Ohio General Assembly, and was on state, who was on state school board at one time, called them "our babies." What's going on with our babies? So a lot of my, my questions will be, will be asked along the lines of what, what we're doing to our babies, and what we're not doing to them. So let me begin with the thirty-second question. And the thirty-second question is, tell me who you are and why you write for school boards, please.
I want to make one correction here, especially since we have people that's watching on Facebook. So our children in Dayton, our children in Trotwood, and our children in Jefferson Township. So hopefully that corrects it. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. My name is Dr. William B. Bailey. I am from Dayton, Ohio. Went to school from preschool to kindergarten, I mean, all the way up to high school. Graduated from Belmont High School. Service community as a police officer. I retired. And I worked in the school systems for probably the last ten years. Thank you to the Dayton Unit NAACP for moderating and for all of you being here. My name is Ken Hayes. I'm also running for the Dayton School Board. I have two kids who attend DPS. They're first and third grade. I teach at Central State University, where I am also the writing program coordinator and the university senate chair. And for me, I think that as a parent of DPS children, watching the interaction of the school board administration on down, it's been a very frustrating experience. I would like to correct that.
Good evening. I was about to say, look at the talk of me in here. My name is Will Smith, and I'm running for reelection for the Dayton Public School Board. I am the son of Dayton Public School graduate, while Falcons. I myself am a proud graduate of Meadowdale High School. And I also have two children in the district, and I have a little three-year-old who's soon being a district. And I'm running because there's work to do, flat out. We have new leadership in our district. We need board members that are going to work with that new leadership to provide opportunities and experiences for our children to be successful in this world that we're seeing today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Walker. I'm actually a former NAACP Executive Committee member. Dayton Public Schools is the heart of my life. I'm a graduate of Dayton Public Schools, Thurgood Marshall High School. Went on to Central State University and Wilberforce University as well. Still getting back to the district. I officiate basketball, football, volleyball, and softball across the region. And for me, it's about getting back to actually building community involvement, parent engagement, and actually building our student leaders now before it's too late. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deion Simmons, and I've been a resident of Trotwood for over twenty years. I have two sons, one graduating in 2014, and one will graduate in 2024. Both will be graduates of Trotwood. I'm a volunteer at the school district. I've worked in the district a little bit. My wife now, I've worked in health and community service for over thirty years. I see so many things that our district is lacking. I think I can definitely add to that. I want to be able to bridge our community with our school system.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Craig Anderson. I am the candidate for the Trotwood School Board. One of the reasons why I've decided to continue as an appointed official is to enhance education and also to work with the leadership of the Trotwood School District. We're not new to what's going on within the Trotwood School District. My goal is to help children who are on IEPs, who have mental health issues, and who are just seeking a transition through from their preschool career to their college career. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Cooper, and I have been a Jefferson resident for the past thirty years. I am retired from the United States Air Force.
Hold the microphone closer to your mouth, please.
Good?
Yeah.
Would you like me to start over?
Go ahead.
My name is Michelle Cooper, and I am retired from the United States Air Force. I have been a Jefferson resident for thirty-plus years. I did not graduate from Jefferson. I graduated from Chaminade Julianne. I am running for school board because our children are in trouble. Jefferson, we are actually a failing district, and it is my goal to be able to change that so that our children can get a quality education and know that their lives have value and be a productive member of society.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rodney Taylor. I've been in Jefferson Township my entire life, fifty-four years. My entire family went to Jefferson. I want to see the school system back the way it used to be when I was there. That's why I'm here now.
I am Renee Daniel. I'm a graduate from Agnes University, social work, and I'm a member of the PTO in Jefferson Township. I'm also a volunteer mediator with the Dayton City of Dayton. I also have a child that's in Jefferson Township's school system as well. I would like, I'm running just to just make some changes. I mean, there's time. It's, it's kind of sad, our, our children with just mental health issues. We just need some help, so I'm just here to bring it up.
Good evening. My name is Shanae Celeste. I am a lifelong Jefferson Township resident, alumni, and I have several children in the district. Four of my youngest sons are in preschool. My oldest is in the fourth grade. I am currently running for this board because I would like to see a change in our district. There is a disparity with the way that our children in this district and their curriculum that we have. They're displaced. They're not getting all the educational resources and services that they need, and I would just like to really see that change.
Celeste, let's stay with the U. Go Jefferson and down the road this way. The question is, what value add do you bring to the table, to the district? And what change would you like to see in your district?
I am an educational advocate. I graduated with a BA in my social work. So I have always been hands-on with seeing educational needs being met, especially for our children. I definitely feel like I'm valued in bringing my resilience. I am in my personal life resilient, and I know that I would be resilient for the children in this district and their educational needs and goals. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. So outside of that, I feel like that I am a great candidate because not only do I know what Jefferson previously was, I'm witnessing how it is currently. There is, again, as I mentioned, a great disparity with the curriculum that they, they have right now. These children are suffering. So I feel that I'll be able to come in, access great resources, get them activated to a better curriculum, get them involved with teachers who can focus on getting them mentally stable. We know that for our children and their educational growth, it's definitely a part of their development. So we want people to be there to do that for them. Can you repeat the question?
What value add do you bring to the table, to the district, and what changes would you make?
One, one, the value I have, I am a social work major as well, and just collaborating and collaboration with basically the, the school board, the teachers, and the parents in the community. We need help from the community in order just to keep our school system running. And so we have a lot of parents out there that are elderly people that don't have kids in the community, but we still need their help. So my collaboration would be the value that I would add, trying to get them involved with the, with the whole school system and everything. I would, I was thinking about even just doing some type of newsletter or something, letting people know, hey, your kids aren't in school, but we still need your help. So just collaborating with the community is something that I, I plan to do.
I have worked in the prison system for twenty-nine years and currently still do. And our kids are out here running the streets. We need help. We need stuff brought back into the school system, tracks, sports, everything, along with education. And I believe that I can help get that back. Our kids are in trouble. You, you have to have attractions to bring some of these kids back in here, keep them off these streets, and get them going.
The value I add to the school district is my life experience. Like I said, I spent twenty years in the military, working with various people. So I believe my life experience is the value I bring, and also the passion to see our children do better and to keep them out of the prison system, to keep them off the street, to let them know that their lives have value, and that we love them and we care about them. I believe we need to get more mental health into our school systems, and I would like to collaborate with the teachers, the educators, mental health professionals, to be able to assist our children with their mental health and let them know that it is okay to speak with someone. No one is going to look down on you if you choose to go speak with someone about your problems. So I want to collaborate with everyone to give our children a chance at a better education and simply a chance at life.
As the Director of Operation of a Youth Organization for the past several years, I get firsthand experience of what our children are going through on the day-to-day. From mental health, from crisis, from interventions, and also children who are in the foster care. I have the privilege of operating five group homes. Have the privilege of managing a foster care agency that oversees twenty-five students. The mental health behavior, and I also, along with psychotropic management. So when it comes to the children within the schools, we're learning that a lot from COVID has changed, has changed how we operate in the schools. Mental health, how our teachers react to our students, and how our students are reacting to our teachers. And then also we're learning that we have a lot of single-parent homes. We're learning that a lot of our children are not, a lot of our children are not home most of the time. As some of the candidates have said, our goal is to try to keep our children off the streets. So providing those services, knowing what is needed within the district to secure a future for, I'm speaking from the African-American experience, from our children who are African-American on a certain size of our jurisdiction. So those are one of the values I bring. And not being too far removed from high school, graduating not too long ago. So I'm the youngest here, but I understand what some of our children are facing today.
I beg to differ, Craig. You're not the youngest here. But anyways, what I bring to the district is I have worked with grandparents and other relatives that were raising their children for over fifteen years. This population receives kids for all different kinds of reasons. The parents being on drugs, the parents being not incarcerated, since the parents were murdered, homicide, suicide. So in array, I've worked with families with some of the most difficult situations, and I feel that I will bring that value to the board. I am currently working with Premier Health Help Me Grow. And in that role, I'm working with moms that have had babies or either pregnant and going out and teaching them parenting and just life skills and coaching them in that manner and connecting them to resources. As I said, I've worked in the health and human services field for over thirty years, so I'm pretty familiar with the resources here in this community. So I think I will bring that value to the board in helping them connect the school board to additional resources in the community. I am result-driven. If there's a problem, I want to see it fixed. I want to get to a solution. I want to find answers. I want to seek resources in the community or outside of the community. I want to bring resources into our district, into Trotwood. I want to be able to support our teachers and our administrators. Our children look different than they looked twenty years ago. They look different than they looked ten years ago. So we need to be able to support our teachers in that way. And as a board member, I will, hopefully I will be able to do that.
Thank you. So for me, my responsibility is going to be a little bit different. For me, I would say one of the things that, that's missing or that I think will bring change to the district is we have to actually ask our youth what they want. And with that, I'm not talking about our four-point-oh, three-point-oh youth. I'm talking about our two-point-oh and below. How do we bring change for those individuals into the district? How do we add more value to those individuals? Because that is where our issues are with regards to academics. How do we add more extracurricular activities back to the district? When I was in Thurgood Marshall, we had ROTC at every high school. Now that it's only at two buildings, I want to see those things brought back. But also I want our leadership, our leadership is in place for a reason. How can we provide better services to our district if we're not listening to our top leaders? We have to be there, support them in all ways, but also know that we're doing a job for the community and the youth that we end up serving. And at the same time, for me, I bring a change of community agencies back to the table that have left the district in the past. A lot of times when doors close within the district, people are afraid to come back because of those relationships that started within that. So for me, that is what I'm looking to do, and that's what I'm bringing to the table with the sign of my candidacy for Dayton Public Schools Board of Education.
Do you think, I'll just start with a saying. My value add is the fact that I am only here for our children's better outcomes. A lot of times we get to talking about a lot of things that have nothing to do with our babies and the people that serve our babies, and that has to stop. There's too many talks about who gets along, who doesn't get along. And my concern is, what are we doing for our children? And that isn't just something I'm saying, that is something that I've been saying. When I first got onto the board, I made the point to go into buildings. That wasn't something that was greeted with open arms by everybody in the administration because this wasn't something that was always done. When I heard something, I went to see what was going on. I go to talk to students. I go to talk to parents. I talk to our staff. And not just our principals, but our teachers, our bus drivers, our custodians, our operations people. And some of the things that we've been changing comes from having those conversations because if board members don't have conversations with everyone, all we can do is give votes on things that we know nothing about. And I think that's something that has been on my mind, not only these past four years, but as we move forward, because that has to happen and has to keep changing. More things around helping people have opportunities. One of the things that I've pushed forward is more extracurricular activities. And not just in sports, but now we've seen in the last few years, we have marching band. Our Belmont marching band just went out of city and placed second in the competition. This marching band was not in place two years ago. These things weren't happening before. We have boys playing volleyball. We have girls getting involved in things. We have students' opponents that work the public address and the video boards at Wilberforce Stadium because these are jobs when we move forward. These are babies who are coming to school, who are actually in the building now longer than the regular school day and feel a part of the fabric of Dayton Public Schools. And so not only is that something that needs to change, but it's something that needs to change rapidly and quickly because we need more people involved if we're going to change this district.
So for me, I think the, the big things that I bring as a value add to the school board for Dayton Public is experience, strong communication skills, and deep engagement with DPS and the community. As a teacher at Central State, I primarily teach first-year composition. And so I actually end up seeing a lot of our Dayton Public students in the classroom as soon as they come out of DPS. And I, I have a unique look at what they do coming out of that system and the struggles that they have, the skill sets that they have. As a parent of two kids currently in DPS, I get to see it from the other end where students are just starting out. And if you look at a lot of the issues that are being brought to the board lately, a lot of them center on those first three years of school through third grade. You look at the, the reading standards. You look at the, the big debates on success maker and mind play and all these things. These are things that I, as a parent, am deeply involved in the conversations with my own kids and play a role in those as an active member of our school's PTO. The other thing is my PhD is in rhetoric and composition. And so I've spent my entire life studying and practicing communication skills. And I think that this is a dramatic change that needs to come to the school board to trickle outward to the rest of the district, is the communication. In my experience, the board seems to be in the moods more than any of the schools do for all of the wrong reasons, and it almost always seems to stem from bad communication. And so I want to bring those communication skills, those leadership skills, and that educational experience to the board to hopefully start to move it in the right direction.
Thank you for your question. Good evening, Bailey. I bring team building. I bring knowledge. I bring transparency. I bring the love for the students. I bring the love for the education, and I bring the love for this city. For me, the changes that I wanna make is that first thing that I say of team building. First of all, we need to be a team. We need to have a buy-in in this education system and Dayton Public School systems. The teachers need to be heard. And when I say teachers, I don't mean just those that are educating our students in the classroom. I'm talking about those that are also educating our people while they're driving them to school, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the janitors. We want them all to be heard. We want our students to be heard. We want our parents to be heard. So we need a buy-in for them to come in. The other thing is, is the mental aspect, the mental health aspect. That social-emotional piece is huge. We keep saying that we want our kids to have a better grade. We want our kids to do better. Well, it's hard to do better when your emotions are all over the place. So one of the reasons that I ran is because I used to work for Samaritan Behavior Health, and I had a, and I had a program that I put together called ESTR, Screen Brief Intervention Referral Treatment. And I took that program all to all the other districts, to Miami Springsburg, to Centerville, to West Carroll, to Van Dingle, Trotwood. And the system worked. Admus gave us 1.2 million dollars to go into these schools for free and to help these students, and it helped all the way across the board. Dayton, we tried to get in, and they would not let us get in. My thing was, if I'm gonna talk about it, then I need to be about it, and I need to make a change. So when I went to school, there was always a buy-in with the parents, with our educators, and with our students. And I'm really ready to get back to that. That's why I say back to basics with Dayton.
So let's go to Trotwood, Jefferson, and Dayton on the next question.
Being in a parent organization or many other organizations is not like being on the school board. The school board is where you have to make decisions and policy decisions. So the question is, what qualifies you to make policy decisions for our children? What qualifies you to make policy decisions for our children?
I'll just go back to my professional experience in working with grandparents and other relatives raising children. I did create policies for grandparents, because they were not a lot out there. If you were, if you are a grandparent or a relative raising children, you know over fifteen years ago, there was no monies available for you. I worked for Wright State University at the time. We did a study why grandparents were not receiving any of the OWF funds. We already had the Kinsch Navigator program in place. That study was done. The state looked at that study, evaluated that study. The Children's Defense Fund did an evaluation on it as well. So I have developed policy. I have been a part of developing policy and procedure for different groups of families and children. So I know how that process works, and advocating at the state and writing and doing the research for policies and procedures. So I know how that process works. So I think that makes me qualified.
So I always have to remind, as we said many a times, and candidate Will Smith has said, it's that understanding, your number-one priority here is the children that we are servicing. Thinking about a policy that the school board is creating, and knowing, thinking ahead, how is this going to affect my little brother, who's currently in the district? How is this going to affect the next child and the next chapter? Understanding that not all children are the same. So if you're creating a policy, you're going to have to create policies that can service all children of all aspect, of all race, all creed, knowing that this policy is going to be in effect until you get that courageous team, that board, to come together and change the policy. So what makes me that person who's evil is working with children day-to-day, working with children with mental health issues, working with children who are homeless, working with children who are in the schools, and we do not have all the resources to accommodate each and every child, because each and every child learns differently. So creating policies to fit each child and to make sure they have a good education.
I believe what qualifies me to make policy and procedure is not only my twenty-plus years in the military where we wrote policy and procedure, is that I have that experience. I believe I have the experience to write policy and procedure, especially for children, because I feel that I know what they need. I know what their emotional needs are. I know what they're lacking in. I say that because I am the mother of a murderer who was murdered by fifteen-year-old children. So I believe I have the ability to reach out to these children and to make them understand why it is so important to get an education and to lead a productive life. That is why I'm running for school board, and I believe I have the ability to make these policies and procedures.
Okay, I was in the military ten years following policies and procedures. I've been working with the state twenty-nine years. All I know is policies and procedures. I have no politician, no speaker. I'm the guy you call when you want something done. That's it. You know, I'm just here for the kids. I can make decisions, 'cause that's all I know what to do.
As far as what qualifies me to make policy and procedures, I mean, we're all here. I'm here, everybody else is here for these children. We just love them, and that's why we're in all these positions that we're in now. Prior to my current job, I was in working in foster care. So of course, there's a lot of policy procedures and, you know, Google was sent you back to fall. So I'm very familiar with process of making those. I was in charge of the foster care training, having your children in your home, and restraining and things like that. So again, I'm very familiar with it, and I know that I can carry out and make some policies and procedures as well.
I feel that I am qualified to determine policy and procedures, because I come from a job within my social work degree, learning policies and procedures. I am very much aware that the children that we will be servicing, the policies that they're following right now are only limited. It doesn't go towards anything that might be outside or further. So I know that right now with the policies, I don't want to be a yes person. I don't want to get into this board and just agree and not actually do the thorough research on what we're agreeing to with these policies. I wanna make sure that it's gonna have longevity for them, for the people that are coming under us, for the people that haven't even thought about us. I wanna make sure that we're able to have a policy that's going to stand a chance and to have community that agrees with them policies, because we want them to be able to, you know, partner together in that aspect.
Thank you for the question. First, I wanna say something that nobody mentioned up here is, I started with policy and procedure on my three daughters, protecting them from young boys. So that's where I started. As a police officer for nineteen years before I retired, I was doing policy and procedure on different committees for at least fifteen years. When I became over Samaritan Behavior Health with the ESTR program, I had to do policy and procedures at that time as well. And that was for four years. Every job that I've had, I've had to do some type of policy and procedure. The job that I'm on now, I work for the county, my investigator, when we lost people, the first thing I did was, I'm gonna go get it. I like to make sure that things are done. I like to make sure that all the policies are read and everybody knows where they stand. So one of the things that I did was, as soon as I found out that there was only two investigators left, and I knew that there were gonna be new hires, I immediately went on my computer. I was a new hire. I hadn't been there for less than six months myself. And I immediately got on the computer and started typing up everything that we needed to learn, all of the policy, all the procedures, to make sure that it was a smooth transition for the next people coming in, because it was not a smooth transition for me coming in. The other thing is that with the policies and procedures, I feel that I am well-equipped for it, because just like she said, I'm not a yes person. But I also know that sometimes policy and procedures, when you put them in place, they don't work. So there needs to be a change. So that means that you've gotta go back in, figure out what you did, what was the mistake, and then change the mistake to make it better. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that this is one of the most important aspects. And for me, one of the things that I bring back to that, what value add do I bring? I think it's important to recognize that while any general policy experience is important, we also have to focus on having educational policy experience. As a parent at DPS, that's one of my big frustrations, looking at the board doing what they do. Many times, they're having conversation and asking questions that, as an educator, just seem obvious that they're asking questions. And it's stuff that takes up so much of the time, it ends up being a root cause of so many of the issues, of the arguments that are had and things like that. For me, that's what I do every day, is working policy. As an educator in the classroom, I am well-versed at curriculum development, classroom management, working with the students, advising students so that they graduate on time. As a writing program coordinator, I am one of the ones responsible for meeting the program assessment guidelines. We have to work with ODHE, the Higher Learning Commission. And as a senate president, senate chair, I work with the administration every day, every week, every month. We're meeting in groups. The school board will have the seven board members and the superintendent, the treasurer there, as well as a few other administrators in the room. For the senate university, or the university senate, there are a hundred and thirty members of the university senate and twelve subcommittees. And as senate chair, I have to work with all of them to make sure that we're following policy and procedure, to make those policies and procedures more efficient and effective. And so this is what I do every day. And that's one of the things that I'm really hoping to bring that experience to this, so that we can quit asking questions that make sense to the educators and start making forward progress on the things that are gonna help our kids work well and move forward.
Thank you.
Somebody who has been in these rooms, I'll tell you one thing, there is no thing that someone can tell you to tell you why they're gonna be good at policy until they're around unless, but one thing, they tell you is that they listen. That is the first thing that policymakers across, not just education, but across this nation, have failed to realize that they don't listen. They don't listen to the people who the policy impacts. Instead, we sit in rooms and we sit and act like we're the smartest people, so we can make decisions for people that are not even in the shoes that we walk in. The first thing we need to do is get out, listen, and research and see how it will affect things. One of the things that I've seen in my time is that we changed our GPA policy at DPS, and I understood that there are people who would raise a fuss. And I think, as Mr. Hayes said, DPS ends up in the news, and one of the first things I said in that meeting was, no one will say that in Northmont, in Centerville, in Huber Heights, they have the same lower standard. Because we're a public district that serves urban children, so of course, we're gonna make the news. Because being in an urban district is why you make the news sometimes. And I had to sit there and say, let's throw all that out. Let's go see what happens. Let's see what happens if we open up this and say, okay, if children that hit this grade mark are still able to participate in extracurricular activities, then let's go talk to them. Then you start hearing students say, hey, you know what, I wouldn't have left out if I would have been able to go join this club with a one-eight in the quarter where my parents were going through job loss. And you start saying, okay, then let's see how this policy works. And as we saw, as this district, when we changed things, we have an increase in students that were involved in extracurricular activities, and those students, on average, raised their GPA up to a next-grade level, because they were able to be involved in something and not kicked out to the curb because they didn't hit a level. That wasn't something that I would have done on my own, because in my house, if you didn't have a B, you weren't playing baseball. You wouldn't play basketball with a B. But I'm not everybody, and my household doesn't serve everybody. So as a policymaker, first you need to listen to the people you're gonna be serving.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So for me, what qualifies me is, I actually own my own small business, which is legal services company. So I actually do serve as a paralegal for attorneys. So I have to do legal research in order to get the attorney they need for that case, which they actually want to prove to the judge for, whether it's for their defendant or if they're representing as a plaintiff. So for me, I have to do the research for that. So any decision that I make regarding policy, I'm gonna do the research. I'm gonna ask the teachers. I'm gonna ask the administrators, see who it really affects. One of the issues with that is, again, we don't bring the children that it's gonna affect to the table as well. The superintendent has a superintendent student senate, which is usually students that have a four-point-oh, three-point-oh. I'm looking to bring individuals that have a one-point-oh, two-point-oh to that table, because again, these policies are gonna affect them the most. But also the parents. A lot of students and a lot of issues that we may see with regards to policy is, the parents don't find out about it until the very last minute. So we have to be more accountable for the results that we're giving to the parents and we're bringing those more upfront. With that, when we look at our student population or our parent population, it is predominantly low-income families. So we have to be more upfront and going out to the community to actually do these conversations regarding a policy that we're gonna bring forward. That way, we know for a fact, hey, we had the conversations, we came in engaged, here's what we came back to the table with, and how we're gonna move forward. If we miss out on that opportunity, then you're gonna always be stuck with having the revolving door with policy is not correct moving forward.
Thank you. That's Jefferson, Trotwood, and Dayton on this question. Do you feel your superintendent is doing a good job? Your superintendent is leading your school district in the right direction? If not, what's wrong and how would you fix it? Okay? So the question is, do you feel that your superintendent is leading your school district in the right direction? If not, what's wrong and how would you fix it if you were your superintendent? So let's go Jefferson, Dayton, Trotwood.
No, I currently do not agree with the way the superintendent in Jefferson South Shore District is operating. I do feel that it can be better. However, the morale in Jefferson has been brought down a lot. We do not have clear communication with the community. They don't have clear communication with them and staff. The superintendent, as Mr. Smith mentioned, does not take active listening to a higher level. We implement and try to get things to him, ideas, giving new things to try to bring more students in, to try to get better curriculum, and of course, teachers that are willing to stay. But at this time, that is not being met. I do believe that he has good intentions, but he has not had the backing or the support for the community that should be there. And some of it, I do believe is at his own fault. I would not say that I feel that he's completely bad, but I do feel like he is not having the best interest of the district at this time.
I agree. I don't think that our superintendent is doing the best that he can. I think that the major thing is the communication. Like the PTO, which I'm at the president of, we even made them kind of change the school board meetings till, you know, later on, so the teachers can be involved in the school board meetings. So just little things like that. Just no communication, things like that. So that's why I don't think he's a really great guy.
I can honestly say that the superintendent, he has very good intentions. In my opinion, you need to wipe out the whole Jefferson board, start over, and you need to pressure him for the things that you want done. Because to me, he has a little more control over the board that's in there now. Some of these board members been in here for thirty years. Time for them to go make a change and get what you want done. He has, everything that this superintendent does, he has good intentions. He has, everything that this superintendent does, he has good intentions. There are four things, but you have to get these board members in there to get the things you want and make him move down.
I do not believe that our superintendent is doing a good job. First of all, I believe that he has been there for too long, and he needs to be replaced with someone who has fresher ideas, more commitment to our children. We don't need a board full of yes people who are just going to say yes to him, so no. I do not believe that he has the best interests of our children at heart. I believe that he is just there. It's something that has become accustomed to him, because he has been there for so long. So I believe he needs to be removed and replaced with someone who has the best interest of our children at heart.
That's a hard question, and I currently work with my superintendent, but I'm going to be very transparent with this question. I would first like to acknowledge my superintendent. In the past several years, my superintendent has made some major strides, definitely transitioning a school district through COVID, and finding resources to implement and continue to educate our children. Now, do I believe that our current superintendent is right for the current climate of my district, of our district? No. As a district that came out of almost academic takeover, academic failure, and as from the recent report card that we just received, our district continues to fall behind in certain ways. Now, do I believe that it's all on our superintendent? Yes and no, because the superintendent is the force of the district. I do not believe that the current superintendent that we had is the right superintendent for where Trotwood Madison City Schools need to be in the future.
So I would say, I think our superintendent is equipped to take our district where it needs to go. I think some of our board members have been there far longer than she has. I think many of our board members have been a hindrance in what she needs to do to get the job done. I think it's time for some of the board members to go bye-bye and let the superintendent lead. She is very equipped, she has leadership around her, we have administration within Trotwood, and I am very confident that can take us to the next level. Our board is often a hindrance and not the superintendent.
So this is an interesting question. So I'll be totally, totally transparent. For Dayton Public Schools, number one, majority of members on the board are already looking for a replacement from the interim superintendent before he even does a job. So I think that we need to allow him to do the job that has been tasked for him, and actually bring change to the district to really move it forward. Dayton Public Schools has struggled over years and years and years. However, we lost a great individual to another district, and he still came back because this is where his heart is and where he's engaged. Kind of a little bit biased, because the gentleman is my high school principal. So this becomes full circle for me, running for, seeing me one of his bosses, and him originally being one of my principals. But I feel that he is the perfect candidate for the job of really to move Dayton Public Schools forward for where it needs to go. Dayton Public Schools has challenges. Dayton Public Schools will be about $44 million in red in two years, but you have an individual who has worked within every department and knows where challenges and struggles are, that can really help move them along forward to really bridge the gap within the district where everyone's working on a team. I believe we need to allow him to do that job.
Mason Gantis, ooh, I love it. But honestly, our superintendent, and I would call him that, you know, everyone seems to love saying interim superintendent, he just got here. He got here, for those who do not know, our former superintendent received an extension and then turned around and left this summer. And then we had to find somebody, and luckily enough, we had somebody in our grasp at the time. So he's only been there since July, and really just getting involved in just moving things. I, to go with what Mr. Walker said, and I will be honest, I was not one of the ones who voted to go for a search. I also was one of the ones who voted to make him our interim, and I also was one of the ones who voted against our previous superintendent getting an extension. I do believe that as a board, you have to support your leader. It's very easy to say a superintendent is not doing a good job when you're on the outside. If you're on the inside and saying the superintendent isn't doing a good job, then what are you doing as board? Because that is your employee, he should be advised. And that is where I think our superintendent is right now, is he's having to deal with a lot of other things that go against what I said before, is keeping the main thing the main thing. Anything that is against getting our district better for our children and our staff and the community should not be on his plate. And as board members, we have to do everything we can to make sure that is not happening, and making sure that we want him to be successful. Every school board member shouldn't want their superintendent to be successful. If you don't want your superintendent to be successful, you're going to hurt the district. So as a board member, I think he is doing a good job, and he's wanting to do some things, but I think no one is perfect, and I think that we, as a board, need to continue to advise him and continue to work with him, so we can move this district where it needs to be.
Well, for the points that they're bringing up are a lot of the things that I would have started saying. Going back to one of the bits earlier that I mentioned, where the board seems to be in the news more than the schools, this is a really good example, where for anyone who has followed the superintendent drama over the last two years, it's been a soap opera. And a lot of that is, again, at the feet of the board, for poor communication, lack of transparency, and it's very frustrating to watch. I have a sort of interesting perspective on it from another end, as at Central State, our previous president stepped down, and we currently have an interim president at Central State. And so one of the key things that they make sure to let us know as faculty, the students, when it comes to the interim president, is that his role is not looking forward beyond this term, that he is there to fulfill the role of the gap until we find another permanent president. And so that interim tag is a really important thing to consider here. For an interim superintendent, who has also made it a claim that he is interested in the full-time gig, his hands are tied in certain ways, where he not only has to shepherd through this hiring process, but he's also sort of in the hiring process as a candidate, and he has to kind of walk that tightrope in certain ways. And I think in doing so, he has done a valid job. It's been as strong as it could be. As a parent, one of the things that I would say in the short time that he's been here that I have noticed, is that the parent, teacher, student engagement coming from the superintendent's office has been far more visible than it was before he got here. The parent mind that I have seen, the excitement, the enthusiasm from the parents, has been higher than it was before the transition, and he has had the going around the district in four quadrants to meet with everybody for superintendent talks. And I think that those kinds of things are important steps that show positive signs.
Thank you. I agree with all these gentlemen here, and what Ken just said, and talking to him, listening to teachers and some of the students, I don't know how he's doing it, because everybody seems to think that he's everywhere. He has been visible in a lot of the schools, he has been talking to the parents, he's been talking to the educators. I think in the short time that he's been here, he has been a good superintendent. I think that we need to give him a chance. I like, in talking to him, and knowing him in the past, like Eric, he comes from the Dayton Public School system. It's not about a white or black thing, it's about him being in the city and knowing what's going on in the city school system. He's not only working as the superintendent, he's also been on the other side to come in and work with transportation and maintenance and things like that. So I think that he's got a very good balance on all aspects of what's going on in Dayton Public School system. I'll say this, since we're talking about the superintendent, one of the reasons that I ran is because of the previous superintendent that we had. I don't think that she was in touch with those that were in her city, that's why she's now down in COVID and all of that. So I think that he'll do a really, really good job, I think that we just need to give him the opportunity and give him the chance to do the job that he's been hired to do.
Thank you for your candid responses. Let's go Jefferson, Trotwood, Dayton. What are your plans to improve the district enrollment, curriculum enrollment, and curriculum? And what resources do you need to improve the district? The question is, what are your plans to improve the school district's enrollment and curriculum? And what resources do you need to improve the district?
My plans to improve the district are to make sure that we have qualified teachers who want to stay within the district. I would like to use grants to be able to give our children the resources that they need to be able to learn. And as far as increasing enrollment, I think once we show that we can provide a better learning educational facility for our children, that the parents that are in Jefferson Township will be willing to enroll their children in our district. I would like to see sports, a football team, basketball team, music, art, to keep our children engaged, and to show the parents that we are working to provide their children with an excellent education.
Jefferson's resources are pretty much all ready there. You need to have, there's no reason why we should not have a track team like we always have. You have to get attractions to get these kids back to Jefferson. You need your track, you need your football team, you have to have band, art, all these things are lacking now, and there's no reason they should not, they should be there, because the money, the resources are there, the grants. Jefferson has money that they're not spending that's going back. You should be spending everything to get all these kids back in here and make the school prosper.
Again, I go back to the collaboration with the community, getting them involved, and kind of like, I remember I had a parent that I met up the street, her kids used to go to Jefferson back a long time ago, and she was saying how when her son was in football, even though it was a neighbor, it wasn't even her son, and she decorated her car, and just having that morale, we don't have that anymore. So I think that that's a main thing, is getting the community involved. We don't even have, like, at Jefferson, we don't even have football, I mean, dances, field trips, I mean, just things like that. That's what I think will have, help the morale, help the kids come, and help the enrollment as well.
As I mentioned on the previous question, the morale in Jefferson is really down, as all my other constituents have mentioned. We do not have activities and sports, we know the funding is there, we've asked to see financial records, they haven't given that to us without any issue. However, it has just been a bigger problem trying to figure out why they're not implementing the money that they have. I definitely know that we need teachers who are willing to stay, but our teachers are leaving because they are not feeling appreciated either. As the president of the PTO, me and Mr. Ray ourselves, we threw our Teachers Appreciation Week in May, we did a big thing for both the high school and Little Will, where we cooked for the teachers, we took meals to them. So in order for us to be able to build that brand, lead the community, we have to have everybody feel appreciated, teachers, parents, and the students. It can't just be one thing. If we're going to do it, it's one band, one sound, so it's going to be all or nothing. That's all that matters.
Now, we all know when it comes to the Trotwood Madison City School, we have its own unique perspective. You always see that red and black everywhere you go. We're known for many plethora of things, such as our phenomenal marching band, our phenomenal sports team. When it comes to enrollment, what we've learned in the past several years, that the Trotwood enrollment has continued to decrease. We're now at roughly 2,400 students in our district, one of the smallest districts within the Montgomery County region. One of the things that I've looked at as a new appointed board and on the board for the last five months, is why are people leaving? Now, we can say due to COVID, we can say they were displaced due to the tornado, we can say many other things, but one thing that when we go out and ask community citizens, why are you leaving Trotwood? It's because of the quality of education. We have some phenomenal teachers, and when we talk about providing resources, it all starts from the top. I'm here to, the role of the board member is to be, is the supervisor or the direct reporter of our superintendent and treasurer. I'm here to support that individual in their job. The superintendent is there to execute the mission and the vision of the school district. And if we're not providing the quality of education that we need for our children, we have a major issue. So the quality of education and also enrollment comes together. Those are what people are looking for when they're moving into new cities, they're looking for the quality of schools. So one of the things that I believe that we can provide is that safe space and that balance for a quality education.
I agree with what Chris said. If you haven't visited Trotwood, if you haven't, we have some of the most phenomenal buildings. We, taxpayers, if you live in Trotwood, we paid a lot for those buildings. I would love to open up those buildings to the community. I want to be able to offer some job readiness programs, some financial literacy programs, some home ownership programs. We feel that when we do that, bringing the community in and elevating them, educating them, and empowering them, that's going to take care of our other problems. That's going to take care of our enrollment. People will be attracted, because they will be homeowners, they will have jobs, our employees will want to stay, our administrators will want to stay, they won't leave. We attract great teachers, we attract great administrators, but they leave sometimes because of what's happened from administrative, administration, what's happened from the board and that conflict. So we want to get teachers and administrators to stay, not to leave, we want them to hang in there with us long-term.
Thank you.
So for me, I'll say two things. Number one, as a district, we have to do a better job of not allowing technology to teach our children. And that's even with TikTok, social media, word of mouth, things like that. We have to get back to, like Mr. Bailey said, back to the basics, we have to really be in the classroom, engaged, into education. With that, I'll also say, when we look at the enrollment, what's key today, and one of the things that I look to bring to the table is, want to lobby our state legislators to provide the appropriate wanna lobby our state legislators to provide the appropriate funding to our local school districts for family members who are taking their kids to charter school. I think a lot of times when a student goes to a charter school, there's nothing wrong with where you wanna take your child to get educated, but make sure that we're providing the same funding that we're dishing out coming in. So one of those things that needs to be changed at the state level coming down to the local level. Um, I'll also touch on when we look at the curriculum inside of the building, the issue that we see with that a lot of times is administrators get moved year after year, teachers get moved year after year from building to building. So they are not prepared to really go forward with their students if they're gonna always be struggling to figure out if they're gonna be long-term in that building or not. A lot of times what we miss out on is the teacher is not the only teacher inside of a student's life. That first interaction comes with that bus driver. So we need to start providing more resources to them to increase our education system as well.
Thank you, sir. To be honest, we need to be honest. Dayton Public Schools has done, sorry, sir, a terrible job of marketing itself for years. For years. Charter schools came in and I, as a parent in the city, would get flyers from charter schools, be a nice little flyer and they'd say, hey, we provide your child transportation. And then you get around and you realize, no DPS is providing that transportation. We don't do a good enough job of telling our stories. There are so many things that happen that you won't see on the news that happens in Dayton Public Schools, nor in Trotwood, nor in Jefferson Township. You have a group of students' opponents that go to a competition in their field, that go to nationals. That's not plastered on the news like other things would be. So we have to do those things because we have to understand as board members, you get four-year terms dealing with communities that are dealing with forty, fifty, sixty years of public education. So we're seeing parents coming into our buildings who their first time that they were told that they wouldn't be anything in life, were in one of our buildings. So how are we then repairing the culture in our buildings? Repairing the culture that we have in our community, making people want to send their children to our schools? One of the things that I wanted to do, um, unfortunately, I hate saying the word, but COVID, is understanding it's not a coincidence that Stivers is ranked so highly when it's a school that students come every day with at least one thing that they like to do. If I don't like math, I'm singing. If I don't like science, I'm playing my saxophone. And so that has been something we've pushed to add more programs, opponents, adding more programs at Meadowdale, adding them into the other schools. And if we're gonna be all the way honest, the demographics of our district in the elementary level looks way different than it does in middle school and high school because our district loses a lot of the non-black people when they go to middle school and high school because if they don't go to Stivers, they're not staying in Dayton Public Schools. So the other part of increasing enrollment is increasing what we're doing at the middle school and high school level because that's when we're seeing families leave our district.
I think it's a difficult time for public education across the board, across the state, across the nation. We have so many things from, uh, new legislation coming in, to lack of funding, to the rise of charter schools and homeschools, uh, that there are a number of things that are out of the direct control of the district, out of control of the board. And so one of the things that I always try to abide by is we have to be able to control what we can control and do the things that we have the ability to do. And for me, when it comes to the idea of enrollment, I think it starts with talking about the turnover rate of staff and administrators. Uh, if you don't have teachers who are here throughout the career of a student's time in school and they're learning the names of the student every year because they don't know who they are because this is their first or second year there, the students don't have that level of trust with, with those staff members, with those teachers. So for me, it has to start with engagement and trust and you cannot do those things unless you have effective and strong communication. And that to me is where the, the board consistently fails. Uh, I can't tell you how many times I've sat in or watched the streaming of a school board meeting and it's, they spend more time fighting one another than they do focusing on the thing that they need to be talking about. And it, it seems like the thing that they don't understand or don't fully appreciate is that they are for better or worse the face of the district. They are the ones that the people see the most frequently. They're the models. And if they're not modeling collegiality, transparency and effective communication, how are we going to expect any other parent, student, teacher to follow suit? And so for me, it has to start with bringing the community in, giving them space and time and resources to be active participants and to give them a reason to trust in the process of the district again. Uh, and without that strong communication, that just is not going to happen.
Thank you. When Ms. Petrow was asking, Mr. Smith, of course, while speaking, I had something written down here, education and media. Education and media, and it goes hand in hand. He's correct. Uh, when you look at our students right now, every time you see something, it's, uh, Dayton Public School, uh, it's always negative and we need to start putting on the positive. We need to make sure that our teachers are looked at in a positive way. We need to make sure that our students are looked at as a positive way. Who wants to come to a school district when all you see is negative, negative, negative? Well, we don't just have negative, negative, negative in Dayton Public School system. We've got some positive kids in our school system as well. We've got some very smart kids in our school system as well. Um, as far as curriculum and things like that, I think that we need to look at other, uh, school districts and what they're doing in their curriculum, uh, that's making the kids have a buy-in. I agree again with bringing, uh, more than just football and basketball and cheer. You see that all the time, but what, uh, but what about the bands? Uh, my daughter did, she, one of my daughters graduated from Trotwood and it was all about the band. Everybody would have a buy-in with the band, bands were going all over the place. What about the arts? When I was, uh, teaching in Dayton Public School system, I mean, uh, and some of the other school systems and when I went into Dayton Public School system, uh, doing second step. Uh, a lot of these kids are sitting there and they are phenomenal drawers. Uh, they have all these other things that they can do. So if we could just start getting some things like not just at Stivers for them to be interested in coming, but we, when I grew up, there was ROTC, there was, uh, uh, all kinds of other activities that they were into and had a buy-in for the school. So we need that back, we need all of that back. So that, so everyone, not just the athletes can have something to do, but everyone in the school will have an opportunity to do something and to contribute to that school and have that camaraderie and to have that healthy, uh...
Coming back to you, so you can finish the sentence.
Okay.
Uh, that's Dayton, Trotwood and Jefferson. Several of you have talked about parental involvement. And so the question is, how are you going to get, keep parents engaged in the learning process? The question is, how are you going to get, keep parents engaged in the learning process? You can do two seconds to finish the sentence.
So what I was gonna say is have that healthy rivalry, that, that healthy rivalry. Because I just went to a football game, I mean, it was, it was almost empty there for Dayton Public. And I, I, it just made me still so sad. Uh, so your question again, could you say it one more time?
Yeah, how are you going to get, keep parents engaged in the learning process?
Um, one, uh, I know in a lot of school systems, they have the, uh, where you can monitor, monitor your students uh, on the, on the computer where they have a code and they're able to go in and see what's going on. Um, I'm not sure Dayton has that, but I think that they should have that. I think that they should be able to come in and monitor their, their children, uh, when, when things are going wrong and when things are going good. Uh, when I grew up, I, I had my mother, my aunts, my uncles, uh, neighbors, they could all come to the school to make sure that you were doing alright. Right now, as a pastor, I just had a, a young man who, my deacons just went, uh, to be honest with you, they went ham on him because he got in trouble at school. It takes a, a, a village to raise these children. That's the way it used to be and that's the way that it needs to be right now. It takes us all to raise these, these children. And I'm gonna tell you, to be honest with you, I feel this way. Students, uh, our children, they really want discipline. But if you don't want to give them the discipline, then they'll run all over. So if we could come together as a family, as a community, and then raise these children, that's, we need to have more parents have hands-on in the school system. And the school system needs to be more transparent as to what's going on in their school system. There should be not months go by when you see someone slamming, uh, a child's head on the ground and then someone telling them that, oh, everything is okay. And then a couple of months later, you find out that this, this child has been slammed on the ground. There should be more transparency across the board. Thank you.
So last night I was at, uh, Northwest Branch Library. Um, the, Andrew Worley, uh, was one of the coordinators for a, uh, new reading, uh, monthly reading program, uh, that DPS is doing where the, the parents were invited out. Uh, they were bringing their kids, there was Olive Garden there, there were all sorts of resource tables sitting out. Uh, and they were spent, it was probably ninety minutes or longer, um, where they had experts in the field coming in and saying, here are the ways that you can help teach your child to read. Here are the resources that you can get to. Here are the things libraries offer, the things that DPS offers. Here are the skills that you can build early with your students by driving with them in the car and talking in the room about sounds that words make. Uh, and for a lot of student, uh, for a lot of the parents there, there were some really vulnerable moments where they were talking about some of their, um, feeling not quite up to the task. And, and I think that that's one of those things where we have to be able to meet the parents where they are and understand that not everybody is coming in with the same skill set. Not everybody has come in with education backgrounds. This may be someone's first child, it may be someone's sixth child. Uh, and all of those dynamics are going to be specific to those parents. We have to know our parents better as a district. We have to create spaces for them to come where they can actually make it and be a part of something and not tell them, we'll be there at five-thirty. We don't have anyone to watch your kids, we don't have any food for you, but be there to come speak and be a part of the process. They, they're, having an open chair is not the same thing as inviting someone in and having things available to them to be able to make it and making it available to them in reasonable ways. We have to create better spaces and opportunities for the parents to come and be involved. We can't just say that they're being lazy. I've yet to meet a lazy parent. Like, they all care deeply about their children, just as we all do about our children in the community. And they want to be there, they just don't know how to be or they can't be yet. And so we have to figure out ways to involve them and create those spaces for them.
Thank you. As a community organizer and somebody that has been all through the city, I will say it's a two-sided conversation. We have to understand that parenting is not easy, but we also have to understand that success is not easy. And so we have to have those questions, conversations where we cannot fully hold people's hands through everything, but we have to get them to have the skills to go through those doors themselves. Because we've seen in our community, people do what they wanna get themselves to do. I've seen it with some of our students, we can say, our students can't do X, Y, Z. Somehow they show up Friday night and they're at that game because they found a way to get there. We have to provide those incentives, but we also have to understand where our community is. So I have to understand, I can't make the only conversation I have with this parent be at the parent-teacher conference and it's at five o'clock and I've got a parent who's got three kids in three different schools. But what I can do is make myself accessible and let the parents know what resources are out there. Because what I will say is there are a plethora of resources. The issue not only with our schools and throughout the community is not just the resources, it's the lack of awareness about resources. If you lined up a lot of our parents and said, did you know right now, you can look into every grade and every assignment your child has, they wouldn't know. Because in some parents' minds, they're still operating off of a way that we used to do things years ago when a parent came in, a parent at your conference and found out about the grades. Right now, in twenty seconds, I can pull up my phone and see our children's grades. But we have to do a better job of letting people know that access is there. We have to let people know what are the resources that are there. So we have to do a better job of more understanding our community, but then giving our community autonomy and power. Because it's one thing to understand that they're doing bad, but that leads us to the deficit mindset that is played in our districts where we say, oh, they can't do it, they're too poor, they're not smart enough, they don't have the right jobs. And we need to switch this mindset and to say, we're not gonna worry about the barriers. We'll remove the barriers, but we have to be focused on success and success is not easy. We have to go along and make it a hard trip.
Alright, so I'll give you three numbers. One is twelve thousand two hundred and eighteen. One is twenty-eight and then the number one. So one is the amount of students that's in the district. One is the amount of buildings. And then one is how many parent community engagers they are in the district. So there's one individual for twelve thousand two hundred and eighteen students in twenty-eight buildings. So we have to get some support in that department for them to do the better job with engaging with the parents. One of the things that I applied Dr. Lawrence on back when he was in the district as chief of school innovation is the leadership team did attendance walks. Board members met on a Saturday and went out to students that had attendance issues and when they knocked on the door, how can we help? So we have to get back to those things and actually help those parents because we're meeting them where they are. One of the things with that as well is the teachers were engaged in, in throughout that process. We have to do a better job of holding our teachers to the standard of when there's an issue, let's not wait till the last minute to notify a parent. We have to make sure that the parent is engaged from the first day in to the last day out. For me, that is what I'm looking to do inside of my role as a school board member.
Um, I wanted to say the three things that are working with parent engagement, um, in the Trotwood District, that's the parent engagers. Um, I was one of the first parent engagers in the district when the road was first designed. Um, not only were parents excited about us calling because we were not just calling because your child has a discipline problem or because your child has an attendance problem. We were calling parents to say, hey, we caught your child being a star for today. We caught your child being a real leader today. So parents are unused to getting good calls. They are used to getting, only talking to parents when there's something negative. We have to get ourselves in a different mindset. Call parents when there's something good to report a parent. A parent does not always wanna hear from the school only when there's something bad to say. So parent engagers, um, Progress, Progress Board, I think somebody talked about that. And we also have something called Parents Square. Um, I know sometimes teachers get frustrated, they say, like, our football games, basketball games, the parents are turning out and when we have open house, the parents aren't there. What I've noticed in the elementary buildings in the ELC, the parents come, but when the kids get to middle and high school, they kind of fall off. Why? I think this gentleman down here keeps saying, communication. Kids don't always come home and tell the parents what's going on. We don't always get the information. So I'm using myself as a parent, I have a high school senior and I'm on him every day. I have assigned mommy and me time every night. We have scholarships, we have college applications. You're gonna talk to me for thirty minutes every night. We're going back to your adolescent years and making that time and making them talk to you because they will cut you out and not talk to you. So it's not always on the parent, we have to, we have to give them the information, but the kid may not be telling the parents. So how are we gonna get that information to the parent in order to get the parent engaged?
As a current school board member, one thing that I know is that we can do everything that we need to do to encourage our parents to get engaged. We can create every act, we can host every dinner, we can host every community walk. But let's have that transparent conversation. Let's talk about when we have done all we can do and the parent still doesn't show up to advocate for that child, to be there for the child, to check up on the child's grades and what's happening within the school district. It's not a lot of our parents' fault. I am a new guardian, my mom passed last year, so I had to take custody of my little brother and my sister. And this is the hardest experience that I've ever faced. It's one of the hardest experiences because when I say that the teachers communicate, I sometimes believe they over-communicate. Every time I open my phone, I see an email from the teacher on how my little brother is doing. That is awesome. But if I'm not engaged, if I'm not, for example, we have an IEP meeting tomorrow. They accommodated me to do the IEP meeting virtually because I could not come in. Those are some of the things that we need to highlight. Those are the parent-type engagements that we need to continue to have. As, um, Ken, Ken Hayes said, is meeting these parents where they are, understanding the background, understanding that mom or dad has a full-time job. So who's that surrogate parent within the district to, that is going to ensure that that child continues to be successful? That they're going to ensure that the child has everything they need. So that's one of the things that I like about our teachers nowadays is because they deal with a lot. Mental health and also assisting in raising children as well.
I feel like I believe that for parent engagement to take place, not only do we have to meet them, but we have to also understand that the educational dynamics have changed for parenting. A lot of the parents now that we're dealing with, not only are they facing their own mental health issues, but they're dealing with children with mental health issues, and there's a lot of trauma bond responses. We are dealing with parents who, I didn't know how to read, but now they're coming home with a brand-new way of teaching math and reading words, so it's a lot of confusion. I know that there are parents that we have to sit back and say, okay, well, miss, you know, can we get you here to do this, do this? I have to work, I can't do this. What happened to the guidance counselors? What happened to the social workers that were in the school that gave alternatives for these things? Like, hey, you know, these resources are available for you. The problem is that a lot of schools are not giving out all the resources, that some schools are kind of gatekeeping them. You're not always aware that you can go here, some people aren't coming in because, hey, I have to go to work because I have to provide food on the table. Then you got another parent that's coming in and says, hey, I'm the only parent and I need him to babysit, so we can't do the extra things. So we have to get to a point where we say, hey, let me step in, you know, that village that we need, that village that we used to have, and say, I got you, I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna support you, I'm not just here for a chat, I'm gonna be able to be able to help you.
Yes, one way that the parents are engaged, to get them engaged in there, we have Progress Report, Jefferson Township, and first, I'm not taking out the saddest, so we need training, we need to learn how to work the system. And I think a lot with the, with the teachers is kind of hard because back when I was growing up, look, the teacher was right, no matter what, the teacher was right, and now it's like totally opposite. So it's, it's kind of hard for these teachers to come at these parents and say, hey, this is what Johnny's doing wrong, no, my son is not, you know. So, so I, just better communication with the teachers and the parents, I think, will be a lot to, to help them get more engaged as well.
Like she just said, the communication on Jefferson Township is terrible. You have to get out there, get into the community, we're lacking the activities for parents to even get involved. You know, some of my parents are still in Jefferson, most of my friends' parents are still in Jefferson. We have to have, try, you have to have everything, education to get these kids back in here. And then once you get all this stuff, you almost, Jefferson Township has the best pride ever seen. So the community will come, they gotta come and interact with you.
I agree, communication is key, but the communication has to start with respect from both the teacher and the parent. They have to learn how to talk to one another, how to speak to one another, not yell, scream, cuss, and fuss, because we all want what's best for our children. So not only do we need to communicate, we need to know how to communicate. Be transparent, let these parents know that we are there to support them and to make sure that their children are receiving the quality of education that they deserve.
Thank you. Unlike you, I'm taken by the challenge. When Sinclair sent me home a few years ago, soon as COVID kicked in, they said, we're gonna communicate via Zoom. I said, I thought Zoom was a Commodore song. The question is, a lot of new, not a new people getting into teaching field, new teachers. And if the superintendent is not going to assist them in getting into this field and helping them become good teachers, what role do you think he plays as a school board to bring in new teachers, to help them matriculate the system and be an effective teacher in classroom? So it's really, how do we bring new teachers in? And if we don't have superintendents who are willing to do it, what role do you think you play as a school board to do that? Can we go Jefferson, I'm sorry, Dayton, Jefferson?
It's like getting the car keys away to your youngster.
You know, I was, I was just thinking about this the other day, and I just talked to a teacher about this the other day. I think that to bring in more teachers and to also keep teachers, maybe we need to have some type of an incentive that when we have our students here in Dayton, Ohio, that are going through high school, maybe we give them some type of incentive to go to school, to become a school teacher, that when they come out, that they will help them pay for their education. Right now, that is the biggest thing. I, I just, I just got my bill the other day, and I started having to make my payments on my school loans, and it was ridiculous. I, I feel like I need to get my five more jobs. So I think that if we go and out and we tell our students that if you want to become a teacher, you go, we will pay for your education for, for you, but when you come back, you've at least got to give us somewhere between five to eight years in your schools, in our school district before you move on. So that's what I think we should do to, to, to have some incentives for them to come in and us pay for either all or a part of their school loan.
So as someone who's been actively involved in public education my whole life, I'm gonna be the first to tell you that teachers are underpaid, under-resourced, under-supported. Those are the obvious things that we can do. And again, we can, we can do what's within our means to do, and I, I think that that's something that we can always strive to do. But I was talking with members of the Dayton Education Association just yesterday, and one of the questions that they brought up to me was led with the fact that they had a number of their students in the district who left the district and went to teach somewhere else and took a pay cut to do so. And so it's not always the pay, it's not always going to be the incentive. To me, again, it's, it's that broken record of communication. The, the teachers do not feel heard. When, when the big issues come to the plate and something needs to be done, they are not involved in the process enough, they are not heard when they are, and I can't tell you the, the frustration that I have when you have this issue on the table and then there's an announcement that it's, it's been this issue for years, and then there's an announcement that a consulting firm is gonna come in and from the outside to the district, we're gonna pay fifty thousand dollars to do this, and then in five months, they're gonna tell us exactly what the teachers have been telling us for the last five years. And that's not only a waste of money and resources, but it's terrible for morale for all of these teachers to sit there and tell you, this is literally what I've been telling you the entire time I've been here. And so if we continue through this thing where they're not felt to be heard, it doesn't matter how much money we throw at them, they're not gonna stick around. We have to make them a part of the process, we have to, again, enhance that communication in two ways, not just where we're outwardly saying, this is what is happening, but we are bringing in those educators and being a microphone for them and not a stopgap. The number of times of the, the board meetings where you see the same staff, the same teachers, coming into the board meetings for the three minutes and saying the exact same thing, month after month after month, and no progress or even progress report being presented to them, it's, it's a very frustrating thing to see.
First off, if your superintendent isn't doing anything to help the teachers, then that's be his or her evaluation. Think we have to really start talking about what board members do, and that should be there, that should not be something that just is not happening. I think also, as board members, we have to understand the roles we play, we aren't supervisors. We do not have authority to tell people what they're going to do outside of our two employees. So what we have to do is actually get out there and listen, being encouraged or being a community person, placing people in a position where they feel like they're being listened to. One of the things that I am glad that I'm seeing a change is in some of the morale. We talk about the people that have left our district, one of the things that I've been pleased to see is the number of people now coming back to Dayton Public Schools. That is talked about because it's not something to be talked about, but we are seeing that now. And I think to, to keep that going, you have to have those conversations, you have to be able to say, hey, how's it going? How's your day going? Because for, for far too long, we had an authoritarian kind of viewpoint on if the board was talking to a teach, that teacher was looking out to see if there's going to get in trouble. And if we're not gonna be honest about it, there's no point in talking about it, and sometimes you don't know fully about what's going on until you've been there and seen that, and seen why I can go in a building and see a teacher who I've known for twenty years clam up and won't speak and might just wave. Because for years, that was the culture of I'm not supposed to talk to you. So I'm, I'm glad you're seeing those kind of changes, and as board members, those are things you have to do through your superintendent and through those, and mentoring that you're supposed to do, that, and those administrative meetings that you're supposed to have with your superintendent to say, what are we doing? It took forever to try to move those kind of things. To have HR, I would say, with people when they left and say, why did they leave? But then before that, let's skip that, have talks before they leave. One of the things that I love doing is talking to our staff, but not just talking to them being a sounding board, but actually going back and saying, this is what I did because of you spoke to me, and getting that trust in our staff. So that's how we need to talk with our teachers.
So for me, I, I would say that one of the things that I applied Dr. Laurent on is just in these two months, he's probably did about twelve presentations to the actual school board. He took people from downtown who actually had teacher licenses and put them into the classroom where there was not enough teachers for this school year. So within those two months, that change has already been done. He also brought principals that were retired back in to help train assistant principals and principals for the job that they're gonna do in that, in those buildings. So the superintendent that's at Dayton Public right now, he's already doing that work. I think that the board, we have to do a better job of supporting him in that work and realizing that that is our top employee, as well as the treasurer and business manager, and seeing how we can better support those roles. I think with the school board, on our end, what we have to do a better job of is actually listening to the ones that are actually out there doing that work on a day-to-day basis. School board members really go to two meetings a month, sometimes three. With that, like Board Member Smith said, before, school board members were discouraged from coming into buildings, going into buildings. I hear, me personally, I worked as an attendance clerk for Dayton Public Schools before, I worked as a parent professional for Triwood Madison City Schools and am an assistant now with Central State University Band. And one of the things that I always hear from students is, we love that individuals come in and do clap hands with us through Omega CVC, we love that community, the community is engaged inside of the building. I think with that, our educators see that, and that's why our educators end up staying and are coming back now to Dayton Public Schools.
I think everything I wanted to say has been said already. I would agree, the superintendent has to support new teachers and bringing them in. I would support a peer-to-peer, someone that's already seasoned, a seasoned teacher that's already in the building, being paired with a new teacher. I think that generally works in most jobs, you don't have to come in and kind of figure it out and fly by yourself, you usually get an orientation and somebody to kind of walk through with you for a little bit. I think new teachers need that support from day to day, somebody to kind of handhold them, as I said before. The climate of these children have changed, they have a lot of different difficulty, mental issues, behavior problems, that, that person, whoever was in their teaching field, their, what is that called, when you're in active college and you get your student teaching, this is a real-life experience now, so we're kind of throwing them into hot, hot water. So if we could do some kind of peer-to-peer mentoring with that teacher and not just throw them in the classroom, I think that's something we could support. We wouldn't have the resources to do it by reaching out to some of our retired teachers and seeing if they could come back and help with our new teachers in order to help them do that, I think that would be our way. And just bringing in the teachers to the table, Erin Lunkin and I, who's running on the ticket with me, we actually went out to Triwood and have had some meetings with our teachers, and they said they are not at the table and not when decisions are made about them and for them. So bringing them to the table and allowing them to be a part of some of those conversations and making some of those decisions around training and new opportunities, I think that would help.
As a current school board member, one of the things that I wanted to address that one of the candidates have addressed is having the seat at the table. What I noticed in my current school district, we advocated to communicate and to walk into the schools, and that's not welcome. One of the things that I wanted to do coming in, I have the privilege of walking into any school I want to and observing, not communicating with the teachers and interrupting the process of education, but just walking through and observing. And I was told that I couldn't do that, I needed to go to these, through these different channels, I must have the superintendent escort me, I must have this person escort me, and as a person who's governing the district in a way, why do I have to have them? I want to see what's actually going on in our schools. As a person who leads more than fifty people, one of the things that my staff say to me is, you support us, if I have an issue, you're there. The superintendent can't be there at all times, but he or she put people in place to support these teachers, such as your administrators, your guidance counselors, your teacher leaders, all of those individuals. And when we have issues in line and when teachers feel like they're not being heard, we need to look at our administration level, and then we need to look at the direction of the central office and where we need to fix things as far as the communication. A lot of our teachers are dealing with a lot of new things, mental health, mental health, mental health. A lot of our children are going through many different things, and our teachers are getting burnt out. They need the support, they need the training, and they need the guidance.
May I ask you to repeat the question, please?
I think it's along the lines that we have a lot of new teachers coming into the system, and they need some guidance, they need some assistance in how to be an effective teacher. And if the superintendent does not help them, walks away from the system, what role do you think as school board members you can play in doing that?
I think our role as school board members is to offer support to our teachers as far as being there for them when they need someone to talk to, making sure that they have the resources they need to teach our children, and to make sure that they have a seat at the table when decisions about them are being discussed, whether it's their pay, whether it's the help they need in the classroom, whatever it is, we need to make sure that we are supporting our teachers and providing them with the resources so that our children are the ones that reap the benefits.
Everybody here pretty much said all I can even say. You have to support these new teachers to pair them up with some of the older ones you have to communicate with. You know, you just have to talk to them, communicate with them, you have to pay them.
One of the things I was looking at as far as teachers coming in new and they get discouraged and things like that, we are, collaboration, we all are working to help these kids succeed, so we're all in this together, supporting them, and also like giving the teachers training on this mental health, because this is like a really emotional thing that's going on with these kids, de-escalation techniques, just different trainings as well that we can give our teachers so that they feel, you know, safe and that they feel, look, you know, I can try to control this class.
I think as a school board member, one of the things that I would suggest is to encourage staff to have meetings, to be able to speak freely without judgment or bias and not be in fear of being penalized once they walk out the doors. I feel that maybe suggestion boxes should be back on the table if you don't want to speak freely, but it should be that they're able to speak to us and let us know, like, hey, this is the policy, that needs a little tweaking because you have your old school, you have your new school, and then you have the middle where you have to meet with that. you have your new school, and then you have the middle where you have to meet with that. So I feel that that's one of the best things to do. If our superintendent is not able to engage with the staff, the board members need to step in and be able to be engaging as well.
Okay, thank you. It's almost time to talk here. And so we have one more question from the audience, but then I have a question to the president. And this question from the audience, and I'm only allowed ten seconds to answer this question. So you're putting on your knee. I'm gonna ask the question in ten seconds. So we're gonna start with Jefferson, Triwood, Dayton, Triwood, Jefferson. That's a little chicken scratch. Do you think that being, do you think that being a convicted felon should disqualify you from serving on, do you think that being a convicted felon should disqualify you from serving on your respective school board? If so, why? And you don't give ten seconds to answer this question.
Yes. Uh, no. No, I'm seeing not a criminal deficit. No.
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 All right, thank you. All right, so here's my question for everybody. I kind of heard this be addressed a little while ago, and it's something that's kind of near to my heart because me and all of my siblings actually graduated from college and we went to various schools throughout this country. And me and my sisters and brothers, we have been in a little debate on this question. So I just want to hear from you as school board members, or school board candidates, and some as school board members, what your perspective is. And that is, you know, because I heard some of you all kind of talk about this, I'm gonna ask some more direct. And you have thirty seconds because we want to close out. And we're gonna go Jefferson, Triwood, Dayton. Each one of your schools are in the bottom tier of all the school districts inside of the state of Ohio. Inside of the state of Ohio, and how many school districts is over six hundred, correct? Over six hundred school districts in the state of Ohio. And we have a school board that based a state school board that says that they feel that they have set inferior goals for African-American students versus white students versus white students. And those inferior goals are, they're saying that the graduation rate, the goal should be that eighty-some odd percent white students should have a goal eighty-some odd percent. And it was six, but it even went down to fifty-some odd percent of a goal, saying that this is what you should achieve. Okay? So when I think about that, that totally goes against the Brown versus Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four, you have equality in the school districts and across the board. So I don't understand why our state school board would even set such goals, inferior goals for white and black students. So the question would be, since your particular school district are at the bottom, do you feel, and this is really a simple question, do you feel that if this, you know, the, the parents who are involved in their children's education, because a lot of you hit on this, I've been sitting over there listening, do you feel that if these parents that were involved in your children's education, if they never pulled their school, their children out of the school district that you're seeking to help govern, do you feel that you will be in the bottom of the barrel? So in other words, if everyone, so let's just say there's five hundred, I just want to be clear. Let's say five hundred, or nine, let's say one hundred parents who were involved in their children's education, they pulled their students out and put them in a charter school. I've heard you talk about charter schools or Christian schools or private schools. Do you think that your school district will still be in the bottom of the barrel? And if so, what? Thirty seconds.
No, I don't think our school district will still be in the bottom because even though they might be related to those children, we still have a grand amount of children that can exceed and be a monument to show what our district can grow into. I think that, I don't, I think that if they would have left their kids there, that their kids could have, could have helped our kids. So maybe, no, we wouldn't be in the bottom, I think we may be higher.
No, I don't think it has anything to do with them leaving at all. Because with them leaving, you still have that strong community of parents and kids that you want to learn, and they want to.
I think we need to challenge our children. We're in the bottom because our children are not being challenged. They're not being told that we are going to raise the grade point average or anything like that. So, no, I don't believe that we would be in the bottom. I believe that we need to open up more challenges to our children and give them a reason to succeed.
Me personally, I don't think that has anything to do with a school succeeding. Many people leave the district for many different reasons. And it's just not all about the quality of education and maybe due to a job or anything. I think that we need to get into a deeper conversation as who's leading this state and who's majority on that state school board? And are they for African-Americans and minorities, or are they just for the whites? And I don't mean to say that in a disrespectful way, but we need to have that conversation. The lack of funding, the lack of resources that's provided to minority communities. So I, I, I just don't agree that because you took your kid out, that you could have helped my little brother in school or someone else make that district successful. They're doing the best they can with the resources provided.
I'll just speak personally, my son is an athlete. He has been, my youngest son, he'll graduate in twenty twenty-four. There's him and five of his friends, they play pretty much, pretty much every sport at Triwood. And I think it's a motivator for them. They've been competing since kindergarten who can get the best grades. I think one of them probably will graduate with like a four-point-two, then goes down to like a three-point-five. So they, they kind of feed off of each other. So I don't think taking them out the district would have hurt the district, but I think sometimes those kids that are athletes and they excel, they can motivate other kids to make, I think sometimes a stigma, if you're, if you're smart and you're an athlete, you can't be smart and an athlete, but they are like the most athletic in their class of twenty twenty-four, they're very popular. So they have kind of run some of the kids that did not do so well. They made those kids look at, they get honor roll every time, they get honor roll every time, and moved that along. So not taking them out would have not been a good thing for our, our particular class.
So to be totally transparent, a lot of individuals, when they leave out of the district, will go to some charter schools. Some charter schools are actually having eighteen rows teach with no teaching degree at all. So a lot of times, even if they take a student out that is struggling academically, they're gonna struggle even more there because of the teachers that are actually educated. So for our district, I think the state school board needs to do a better job of actually evening the border cross of what we actually level our students here and realize that we are eighty-six percent low-poverty students.
Tried to get us rather forward, you tried to get us. Um, but I'll start, I think, your question. And your comment around, are we having separate goals for black and white students? Is really rooted in the fact that we've created separate outcomes for black and white families already across the state and across the country. So of course, we're gonna try to set different goals because we've already set the different outcomes already. Now, about the students and families leaving, that is a nuanced conversation because our districts and urban areas started going down as people left our cities because jobs left our cities. So it depends on if the people who are leaving are parents with means and families that can add to resources. That is a separate conversation than people who are leaving because they're going to say charters and then coming back to our schools and they're too very low's bottom. So I think there's a lot of conversation in that as to understanding as a school board and a school district, we are sometimes bound to the success of our cities. There are no high-performing, poor, urban districts in Ohio. So if you say Dayton and Triwood and Jefferson Township are at the bottom of the state, they're there with Columbus, they're there with Cincinnati, they're there with Cleveland, they are there with Akron, they are there with Toledo. Because poor districts do not have those resources. Because in most of those cities, the families that have, are well-off, do not go to public schools anymore. And so then you have those things. So until we are really looking at creating ways to get around those barriers, and then the only way we're gonna do that is to get away from the deficit mindset that this situation has put us in. It's put us in a situation where we say, our children cannot do because they're poor. Or we want to lower things because they do not have this, and now we do not look at what we have. We don't look at the assets, we don't look at the positive outcomes. And so we constantly perpetuate this negative cycle of, we're not going to do well because we're poor, instead of saying, we're going to be great in spite of being poor. And until we change that mindset, we're gonna be where we are.
Yeah, I, I think that this, there's a lot of the root of this question that sort of gets into what we've been talking about the entitlement. You know, what role the parents play, what role the students play, what role the teachers and the administration play? For me, the, the way to look at the question is not necessarily pulling students out and then all of a sudden there being a vacuum of success, but what is the root cause of them leaving in the first place? And so for me, if, if they aren't leaving, then that is an indicator that there's a reason that they are staying, that they've maintained that confidence in the schools, that they have trust in the process of the district. And so that means that something is working well enough that they have changed their mind and decided not to leave. And so for me, I think it's, it's going to be a nuanced conversation where we have to look at the data that is relevant to our community, to our students, to our parents, looking at what they have available to them and making sure that there's equity in access, equity in opportunity, and using that as a foundation for hopefully equity outcome in the long term. But for me, if, if folks aren't leaving, then that means they're, they're staying because something is working. And so we have to be creating a system where it's working so that the strongest students and the weakest students are both getting a leg up, regardless of the background, that their needs are being met effectively.
Uh, I really agree with Mr. Smith and Mr. Hayes. The only thing that I probably could add is those that are leaving, you would have to know what the data is as to why they're leaving. Some could be just leaving because they're being expelled or going to a charter school because there's no other school to get into, you never know. I don't think that it really plays a big difference because we still have brilliant students that are in Dayton Public School System. You still have parents that have the body into the school system. You still have the teachers that have the body into the school system. So I don't think that it plays a huge difference with them leaving. And then we don't have the data as to how successful a student is once they have left. So we would need all that data to really answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm gonna end where I started. I asked you to go to the Ohio Conference NAACP website, look at our task force on best academic practice models for black students. I've had a task force studying this issue for five years since twenty seventeen. And so there are at least six school districts in the state of Ohio that we look at as an example. And one of them is Stupidville, and we think is doing the very best job, but poverty is not the real answer. And I think some of it answers some of the others, you know, challenging students, challenging them. But poverty is not the key indicator. And we have challenged the Ohio School Board. By the way, you know, the governor's gonna take it over. So now it's gonna be a department under the, under the state of Ohio. Like this, our governor has said that he's gonna defy the law. So we'll have to see what happens. At any rate, we may, we may be under a Department of Education. I just want you to pay attention to that website because we're gonna come back to it, we're gonna actually look at your report cards and then see how we can implement some of these recommendations. And I think Akron, early academy was the other urban school district, that I can speak to. One was, was Stupidville for sure. Thank you for commenting, for answering the question. If you're on the school board, we're gonna continue this conversation because we're asking our communities, every one of our communities is dissecting this across the state. Deep dive, we've got to raise these levels for our babies. We can't continue to have our babies failing and then wonder why we don't have a, a good workforce. So let's work on this together, and I will be back in touch with your education chair, and I will be back with you soon on this topic, Mr. President, so.
Okay, you know, thank you very much, Chairman Roberts, for putting on this forum for all these candidates. Let's give all these candidates a hand. We understand we've had some tough questions here, some easy questions. But at the end of the day, as I started this conversation, it's all about our children. You know, if you're not getting for the children, then like the song says, move, get out the way. Then because at the end of the day, it's about our children. If we're not doing them a good service, then, then, you know, we're, we're not even out for the best interest of this nation. Because as we think about how, how the tables, our economy works, how your economy works in your particular community, it's gonna go back to the school system. Who wants to bring their children to our particular school system? So that's really something we really got to take a harder look at. And that's why President Roberts, at his president level in terms of the state NAACP, put together that task force because he's seen these local performing school districts in our, in our backyard. But he sees some urban school districts, like what he said, Stupidville, Akron, that are performing high, and they're urban districts as well. So what we want to do as NAACP, if we want to work with the school board members, we want to work with, you know, superintendents, we want to work with teachers, administrators, faculty members, whatever it is inside of your system, that's gonna be able to enhance our children's education. We cannot tolerate being at the bottom of the barrel. Our children are too precious for that. And like you said, they're brilliant. There may be some challenging home environments, but if we work together collectively, we can bring up those scores. And that's what we're looking, and that's what we said when we actually went and met with Dayton school, school officials, that like Tom said, like Chairman Roberts said, we're gonna be back. So just know that, that the job that you're looking for, the job that you're seeking, the job that some of you are in, we're gonna be asking the, you know, the question, what plans are in place to get us out of the bottom of the barrel? What improvements can we show that our children are being, you know, the education is starting to be enhanced? You know, so, you know, at the end of the day, some parents are taking their kids out of the school, I heard you talk about Stivers, I heard you talk about Stivers. They take them out of Dunbar and put them over in Stivers. Or at Opponens, put them in, at Opponens, third, and put them in Stivers. Put them in Depp. So that, so what you're gonna find is, look at these report cards, you're gonna see where the schools inside that district are performing the best. So why is that? So at the end of the day, he said his time was going to be this time ago, but I give fire to my education too. And I'm serious about education. So with that, thank all of you, we love you. May the best man, woman win on November seventh, and we wish you well and look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Since it's sanctuary, so make sure we take all of our This is a sanctuary, so make sure you take all of our garbage and things through the trash.